My pleasure to the citizens who live in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Hoover.
Mr. Humbert.
Mrs. Lombardi.
Hi, I'm here.
Mr. Hershey.
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum.
There.
Mr. Hurt.
Absent.
Ms. Russell.
Present.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Bergwell.
Absent.
Mr. Hoover is here and Stacy Fuller is absent.
Oh, Mayor Bell is here too.
Oh, Mayor Bell is here too.
Can we make sure that Mayor Bell's -- oh, she's on there?
She's on the list. I just actually skipped her for all I got up.
That's okay.
Did you hear from Amanda?
I have not heard from Amanda or from her.
Brian, did you hear?
I have not.
You're in records. Randy Teal is recording and ONG is recording. All right, we have one scheduled visitor, Mr. Tim O'Neill, acting as the bond counsel for Oxford Borough. Mr. Neal, the pool where yours.
Oh. Thank you a lot. My name is Tim O'Neill. I'm a lawyer with Land Mac Llanin in Westchester. I've been doing bond counsel work for my career and in fact did the pool that you borrowed from New Garden in 1998 and then the 2008 note issue which National Pen bought, it's now BB&amp;T. And this, tonight, you received an offer from Fulton Bank and it's for two purposes. One is to refinance the 2008 loan which still has about $1,004 outstanding, but it has an interest rate of 4.77 percent and today the interest rates are lower. Fulton Bank's going to be happy with 2.95 percent. So that will save about $300,000, depending on rates would have gone because the other one had a variable rate of interest. The other part is to cover the borough share of the new transportation center and that's expected to be covered primarily by government grants. But in the meantime, they are grants by reimbursement, so you're going to need money to pay the contractor before you get reimbursed by the state. That is allowed to be up to $2.5 million just to make sure that things go well, but when the grants come in, you're going to settle on a lot less. We're not quite sure what it is or are you?
We're not quite sure yet.
But it's a lot less than the authorized $4 million note. The $4 million covers roughly $1.5 million to refinance the old note and another $2.5 million to allow you to finance on interim basis. It's only, it's interest only until 2020 when, by which time you should know what the actual amount is, then it'll kick in. And that's also 2.95 percent. So in order to undertake a loan like this, Pennsylvania has a statute called the Local Government Unit Debt Act and it requires you to pass an ordinance which we have drafted and advertised, a summary of it, and they will local them on Thursday, that provides that you are, if you enact it, you would intend to issue the $4 million note for that purpose. It's called a general obligation note because you promise without any particular security, except the fact that you agree to levy whatever taxes it will take to pay that note off. That's called a general obligation of entitlement. You're not allowed to do things like give a mortgage or that sort of thing, but you can promise your general credit and that's where that's gone. The state also has limits on how much you can borrow as a function of total revenues. You're well within that. You have about $15 million in borrowing capacity and I'm sure you don't want to go anywhere near that. This is there, so this has little impact on that. There are federal tax laws that we have to cover in this ordinance also and that's just to agree that you won't take the proceeds and invest them just to make a profit because if you can borrow money at 2.95 percent, there's a fair chance you could invest a little more than that and make some money. That would be called an arbitrage financing. So some of the provisions in here cover that. The rest of it is just listing the dates on which you're going to pay, which at the moment is June and December, and instruct the paying agent, which is Fulton Bank itself, on what to do with proceeds to the bond, to hold them. There is no takedown of $2.5 million at the moment. When we close this on August 1, we're hoping, we expect that we'll pay, we'll refinance the other loans with BB&amp;T for $1.5 million, but I don't think we're going to be taking anything down yet for the transportation center. And that'll be taken as you need it, paid back when you don't need it because you're going to be getting grants in too, so that's a floating rate. It's almost like a line in credit. I don't think there's anything else in here that's worth describing. Well, there are other provisions in the act that are important, but they don't present an issue and that is to say you can't borrow money for something that, for a project, it's not going to last as long as the debt. So you don't borrow money for 40 years if you want to pay the tenants' court. That's just not allowed, but here, we certainly hope the transportation center lasts at least 20 years, which is as long as this note goes. Are there any questions of those who, I think you've got the ordinance?
Yep.
Neil or?
Yes. I think the question that I had and I've heard in the community is, and I think you just answered it, but I want to clarify and make sure that I understood it properly, that on August 1, when these papers are signed, that loan at BB&amp;T will be paid off.
Correct.
That debt.
No, that's not correct. The loan that we are borrowing, $4 million, is a bridge loan and I've explained this. It's a bridge loan for construction. We will use that to pay the contractor. Right now, we've paid about $1.7 million and we've been getting funds back. We're running short of that pot of money that we were using, so this bridge loan allows us to borrow up to $4 million and then pay it back as we get the grant funds back in, which we, which will reserve $1.5 million for the BB&amp;T loan to pay the BB&amp;T loan off and will leave a pot of money of $2.5 million for the garage, which may or may not be needed and it shouldn't be needed. So that's how that works. We could, in fact, pay the BB&amp;T loan off upfront, but that would leave us short of funds, knowing that we have several projects.
Oh, because we haven't got very invested money yet.
Right. So we're looking to, we're looking to float money, to wait for our other money to come back and have it go back in as it comes in.
Well, I understand, I hear what you're saying.
Right.
But that's not going to work because the ordinance says that it's going to be used to pay off.
Yeah, it has to be. Somebody changed that. That wasn't the intent. Okay. That's why I said you can borrow the $4 million, not the $1.5 million. But on the debt act, if you borrow money to pay off another debt, you've got to pay it off as fast as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we will be paying off BB&amp;T.
Then we will be paying off. Right. That wasn't, when I originally set this up, that wasn't the intent.
I know and I understood that, but when I read the ordinance, that's why I emailed you immediately on Thursday to clarify that.
Would you like to change the principal amount? You can do that if this meeting is going on. When we advertised this was enacted. If you want to leave yourself that cushion.
Can we go, I mean, if, if, if we pay this loan off as we're obligated to do according to the ordinance, August 1, and we run through that money and we have no money?
The $2.5 million.
That $2.5 million. Can we then go back to Fulton and say?
Do it in other ordinance. You could, but you don't want to, it would be more expensive and I don't know whether they would approve more money now.
What did they say? You had a meeting on Thursday of --
No, they were fine with us using the funds to pay off the BB&amp;T bank loan, which saves the borough about $300,000, so that, they were fine.
But didn't they want documentation for that?
But I didn't ask, I didn't ask for any more funds because I'm, well, I'm positive we can do it at $4 million. I'm positive we can do it at less than $4 million.
Good, good. Then that's all we need.
I don't think we need any more.
We may have a pinch around the August 1 date. It depends on how quickly the reimbursement, the grants come back.
Right, so we're getting, we're getting $700,000 in on Wednesday back from some of the grant money and we have PENDOT grant money that we're now anticipating getting back as well, because the $1.5 million that we paid out this month is going to, takes about four weeks to come back. So that was the whole reason behind the bridge loan.
The urgent thing.
Right, so that we could reuse the money over and over again and pay it down. Would it help if you, you could put it off under the federal laws for 90 days? Would it help you if instead of paying it off August 1, you exercised your borrowing capacity on August 1 but waited for? Well, we were never going to use it all immediately. We were going to draw it down as necessary so you're not paying interest on money. So we took the $4 million and held on to it right away. We would be paying the interest, which you don't want to do. There's no reason behind this.
We're federal to pay off, so allow that.
Carmer funding would allow it. We can do that. We should, we'll be fine. You sure? Okay. Because I mean, carmer funding means that if you borrow money to pay off an old debt and you pay it out not more than 90 days later, you're still okay, so. Okay.
But 90 days won't matter. And I think the community, the community would probably feel a lot better if they knew that we were paying it off August 1 with the money that we're using.
We can do that. We have, we have, I believe that we have the revenue to do that. Good question.
Great question. All right, I got to thank many of the residents in this community, okay, for some of the great questions that I get credit for because we have really great residents who know how to reach me no matter where I am, even if I don't do Facebook.
Just to clarify, do you want to clarify what the statement was, that we're not here today to raise taxes? There was no intent nor is there any possibility to raise taxes today?
And I don't believe that anybody sitting around this table would vote to raise taxes.
No.
But I think that we should be candid about the fact that we are leveraging our ability to raise taxes.
Absolutely.
Just like we have some of the other loans.
Just like if we purchase a house.
Buy a car. Nine hundred thousand. So it's our job as the council to have a budget that is a workable budget and included in the budget will be the payment for the loans.
That's correct.
And, and the one thing that has fallen short over the last seven months is that we actually lowered taxes coming into this fiscal year and I believe that is the intent and the commitment of the current council to continue to do those things and not to raise taxes. I can't recall that ever being something we've discussed or committed to. So my understanding is that, that verbiage is standard technical bank verbiage that we need to commit to when we borrow any amount of money, not, not $4 million, $2 million, $1 million, that, that anytime we take that on, we would have that verbiage. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Because that's like the way he said, that's how we --
There was a lot of Facebook hysteria today about the fact that we have been untruthful and that, again, we are lying to the community, that our intent is to raise taxes and that this project can't fund itself and from the very get-go, what we have committed to is this project funding itself and that is the intent of this council. So I don't know where the rumors came from or where they started. It is a standard bank verbiage that we've committed to, right? Did I say that right?
Yeah, and you're going to have costs that are $30,000 a year lower just because you're paying the high interest rate off.
We're actually saving money.
On that portion.
Yeah.
So that gives us, that leads us into the ability if we maintain the same payment to pay this BB&amp;T loan off in eight years instead of 10, which is remaining on the note. So that actually saves the borough on two ends.
Let me ask you this. When we make those payments on this loan, how do we differentiate the money that goes to, charged to the parking transit center and the money that goes to a prior project? How do we show that?
The bank is going to give you two schedules. One shows the payoff of the 2008 note, BB&amp;T note.
Oh, wonderful.
The other schedule is the maximum amount, if you did take $2.5 million, but you're not going strictly anywhere near there.
Okay, so the bank does that work for us and we just post that?
Yeah, they've also agreed to, if you borrow money and you get the grants in faster than you expected and such, you can repay at any time without any penalties.
Without a penalty.
Which to me is a good deal.
So we've got a good view.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The bank was to keep you happy. I don't know, are they your bank anyway? They're not.
But we, but a lot of RFPs and that was the banks with the, with the best circumstances, especially with no penalty. So what Fulton offered as opposed to the many other banks was the best deal for the borough and for the residents.
Brian, both of the human willies and also just because our people here may not come, how much do we currently expect that we still owe on the project, on the garage project?
We, so far, we've paid 1.77 million. It's a $7 million project.
But what's the difference, and what's the difference between?
So there's, so there's three, there's 3.65.
That's not accounted for in terms of what we had.
No, that's, that's the grant money.
Okay.
3.65 million. We still have grants, applications out there for CRP grant and for the RACP grant to only 1.8 million.
So assuming we don't get those and we only have money that's already been awarded to us, what are we looking at in terms of money?
As far as financing?
Yeah, to finance.
Approximately 1.8.
1.8 million.
Approximately 1.8.
1.8 million before this loan?
Financing.
Finance, so we only need to finance 1.8 million. And the idea we're taking out a loan now is that as we start having to contribute that 1.8 million, we'll be getting garage rental real and that's why we --
Well, we would hope to have, we would hope to have the garage open at the end of this year so that it can start to produce its own funds and pay for the, pay for the loan. But the loan, the first payment on the loan is not due until, I think, June of 2020 or? I believe I checked. I think it's June of 2020 is when the first principal payment is due.
But isn't the, didn't we change the starting date of the garage for, till March 1st?
Yes, we did.
And they have one year to complete that.
They have one year for substantial completion.
So perhaps we won't be moving on to it till March 1st.
We won't, the Borough Hall.
Not meant of cars.
So the, well, we've always, we've always thought that we could open the garage prior to substantial completion of the Borough Hall. Once the garage structure is complete, the transit center structure is complete, we can open that up and complete the interior project of the Borough Hall, which is the way the schedule is made out to look like.
And on that 3.6 that you mentioned grant, does that include the million dollar gift?
No.
No.
That's the soft cost money.
That went to the soft cost.
Design and engineering.
I think that we're confusing and things probably just stood in front of me and I don't remember, is that I thought that the shortfall that we were talking about kind of up until this point was closer to like $3 million when you subtract the cost of the garage and the grant money.
So we, so we have, we have a million and a half dollars of capital reserve.
Okay, so we added that.
We add that in to the 3.6, gets you $5.1 million of a seven, or $5.1 something million of a $7 million project, which leaves you about 1.8.
Okay, and that's what we're borrowing for?
The difference is what we're borrowing. Right, correct.
I know, so I'm going to, well, can you hold for one second?
Sure.
Mr. O'Neill, are you able to stick around for two more minutes till we get the public comment?
Yeah, he wants to.
Okay, great.
In fact, with the 4th of July holiday coming up, it'd be helpful if I could leave with the documents signed if you enact this to send to DCD, Department of Community, Economy and Development.
So are you cool hanging out for just a few minutes and we'll do that? So if we can move to the agenda adoption and open it for public comment and there may be some more questions that come from our public. Is that good?
Sure.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I look like I'm doing something.
I know.
You'll be up here, but that sun is in my eyes and I'm trying to, like, that's all right. No, in fact, that one, there is no hope.
Oh, good.
All right, so may we move on to, thank you so much.
Sure.
May we move on to the agenda adoption? Is there any, is there a motion?
I'm imagining we have an agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any additions or deletions to this lovely adoption?
Can I just also make comments of, given like the business of the public hearing, so we can hear comments on the financing at that.
Yeah. I was just trying to not pick up, Mr. O'Neill, trying to remember what you had to.
I might have more questions from the audience than I can.
Yeah, okay.
The vote has to be a roll call voting.
Okay, it has to be a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And under discussion items, could we add the scheduling of September's meeting?
We always think ahead, thank you. And.
And can you note for us, Lynda, that Amanda joined our adventure about five minutes after seven?
Yes.
Thank you, Lynda, for saying that.
Brian, can we just add like Facebook and website communications to the audience to discuss?
Sure.
Some of the discussion items. Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Public comment, so I'm going to remind people that it's a four-minute limit if you can try to keep it to that. I am frequently reminded by my solicitor that this isn't a, a time that I need to respond back and forth, that we're, this is a time for you to give us your comment. I try very hard to give you answers if I can give you answers because I think that's helpful, but please note that this is your time for us to hear you, so.
Name and, name and address.
Name and address. And I'm going to go right back to him first because he had his hand up as we started our --
It's not really a comment, I just want to kind of follow up and finish.
Name and address.
Taylor Parrish, 725 Rising Hurst Street.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with where Amanda was going, there's this potential, this 1.8 million was kind of wavering out there, but we are actively still working on two grants for that portion of our state money.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was --
And that's what Pauline was talking about a couple of weeks ago. Do we know how they're progressing?
I talked to her today, I have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. At this point, nothing is moving because of the, I thought on her call she said sometime in July was, August was when they moved, so August, September probably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hers. Next round.
You want me to?
Yes, please, inter- address.
Tim R., 225 West Lovest Street, Oxford, PA.
Thank you.
Tim Hart. A-R-D. A-R-D, okay.
Oh, thank you.
Everyone wants to put the T on it, though. The 1.8 that you're refinancing from BB&amp;T, that had 10 years left on the amortization.
1.5 and yes.
And at 10 we're left.
Yes.
Now we're going to make it 20?
No, 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 we're going to make it 10.
Oh, okay, so you're leaving the amortization the same, because I'm saying you can lower all the interest for H1, if you extend the amortization, you're going to say it's 10.
Make it well.
That's what I said when I said we were making the payment the same.
Okay, so and then any residual of the, of the parking comp, like, would be 20 years?
Yeah.
Up to 20 years.
Sure.
But definitely you're not extending the term on 1.8 or 1.5.
Okay.
But I want you to save your money if anyone did that.
The debt act, the section we're using, you can't extend it, so we're going to pay it off no later than the date that it would have been taken.
That would be later now, correct. Right, that's good, that's good. Then you're saving money.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
You can pay it off earlier if you make the same payment. Right, correct. We'll be paying it up in eight years.
As long as you do it in a regular amortization period and don't extend the amortization period, you're saving money.
Sure.
As soon as you extend it, you're, yep, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Is there?
Michelle, Michelle I. Neri, 766 Market Street. I just have a question for the attorney if I can.
Can you, you, you either have to speak up or step up here. They're not --
Lynda can't hear you from Mr. O'Neill.
For Mr. O'Neill, my, my question is, is current council has decided that they are opposed to creating a parking fund. Would, the way this loan is structured, if that were to happen in the future, is that okay under the current structure of the loan?
Loan wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Okay, so it wouldn't matter if it's paid?
If you have to pay it back, like any bank, you're not, you can't call them up and say, "I'm sorry, I ran out of cash, I'll see you later."
Okay, only because it said it needs to be in the general fund budget and --
But if you want to use revenue, you can use revenue from any source.
Okay.
There's no limit on that.
All right, thank you.
But, but it doesn't require you to levy rates and charges of any sort, like you usually do with like a sewer or water transit.
Right.
So it's up, it's strictly up to the council how they want to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment about any agenda items? And then there's a time at the end for non-agenda items. All right, hearing nothing else, we shall move on to nothing for business carried forward. We'll go into new items of business, which is a formal hearing. No?
No, I know you're in there.
It's just a motion.
They make you use the word ordinance, but it's not treated like an ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Your normal ordinance.
Thank you.
So here you can just vote.
So someone needs to make a motion?
You already had that, I know. Or was that?
No, so we don't need the public hearing.
No, we don't need the public hearing, so who, would they know if they make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Right.
So the motion is, I will, will we enact the ordinance in the form described that presented this meeting to incur $4 million of non-electoral debt for the purpose of funding the borough share of the new multi-modular transportation center and of refinancing the borough's general obligation note, Series 2008.
Second.
Is it open?
No, we already got it. Oh, yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine, trust me.
So we've had, we've been educated, we've talked about this several months now. Is there any more discussion that the council has in regards to this motion?
I know we've discussed this in the past, of having what Michelle just referred to as a parking fund and when we brought that up before.
You just put this motion, because that's something different.
Well.
I love you.
But, yeah, but I think that, that knowing that that parking fund, the second established and that we have some way to, to monitor that and separate that is part of the basis of my debt for this motion.
Okay.
We've also already done that.
Yeah, we've already split it out, yeah.
We just, we just don't have an authority, we didn't want the parking authority.
We don't have a, our parking authority, we don't have a tax, we're not taxing for that.
Well, I don't agree with that.
You don't think we have revenue coming in that's separated for parking?
I don't see how we have that separated with our expenses and I know we talked about having that separate fund and we were told by Brian and the solicitor that if we had that separate fund, we could never take any excess money from that parking fund and put it in the general fund.
And that's accurate. That's accurate. So if we, if we specify that this money is only for parking, then this money is only for parking.
But we have the water fund and, and other.
But we don't move the excess into general.
I think that what we have done, although I agree that I, I think that it could be a little bit more clearly fleshed out, I don't think that it, I think that that is kind of a process that we can see to work on, is that we have kind of system of cost allocation and special supports now, but we're able to keep it.
And we have that now.
And we, and that is something that you advocated for, that we don't. I agree that maybe we should keep working with it.
Because on the, on the positive side, if, if the parking fund were to generate as much money as it potentially could and we couldn't move it over to general fund, that would be helpful and we couldn't reduce taxes, which is our ultimate goal.
We would also like to remind everyone that in this transit center sits the Borough Hall.
Correct.
Weeks to come back, so that was the whole reason behind the bridge loan.
Right.
So that we could reuse the money over and over again to pay it down.
Would it help if you could put it off under the federal laws for 90 days? Would it help you instead of paying it off August 1st, you exercise your borrowing capacity on August 1st but wait for it?
Well, we were never going to use it all immediately.
Right.
We were going to draw it down as necessary so you're not paying interest on money. So we took the $4 million and held on to it right away. We would be paying the interest.
Oh, no.
Which you don't want to do.
Okay.
There's no reason behind this.
We're federal to pay off.
Carrefour funding allows...
We can do that. We'll be fine.
You sure? Okay. The carrefour funding means that if you borrow money to pay off an old debt and you pay it out not more than 90 days later.
Right.
You're still okay, so.
Okay.
But 90 days doesn't matter.
90 butchers in the September.
And I think the community would probably feel a lot better if they knew that we were paying it off August 1st with the money that we're using.
We can do that. We have, I believe that we have the revenue to do that.
Good question.
Great question.
All right. I got to thank many of the residents in this community, okay, for some of the great questions that I get credit for because we have really great residents who know how to reach me no matter where I am, even if I don't do Facebook.
Just to clarify, do you want to clarify what the statement was? That we're not here today to raise taxes. There was no intent nor is there any possibility to raise taxes today?
And I don't believe that anybody sitting around this table would vote to raise taxes.
No.
But I think that we should be candid about the fact that we are leveraging our ability to raise taxes.
Absolutely.
It's collateral.
Just like we have something there.
Like you're a lot of dollars.
Buy a car.
That it's our job as the council to have a budget that is a workable budget and included in the budget will be the payment for the loans.
That's correct.
And the one thing that has fallen short over the last seven months is that we actually lowered taxes coming into this fiscal year and I believe that is the intent and the commitment of the current council to continue to do those things and not to raise taxes. I can't recall that ever being something we've discussed or committed to. So my understanding is that that verbiage is standard technical bank verbiage that we need to commit to when we borrow any amount of money. Not 4 million, 2 million, 1 million, that anytime we take that on, we would have that verbiage. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Because that's like the right said, that's telling me.
There was a lot of Facebook hysteria today about the fact that we have been untruthful and that, again, we are lying to the community, that our intent is to raise taxes and that this project can't fund itself. And from the very get-go, what we have committed to is this project funding itself and that is the intent of this council. So I don't know where the rumors came from or where they started. It is a standard bank verbiage that we've committed to, right? Did I say that right?
Yeah, and you're going to...
I'm not always the most honest.
Your costs are $30,000 a year lower just because you're paying the highest rate of your straight up.
We're actually saving money.
On that portion.
Yes.
So that gives us, that leads us into the ability if we maintain the same payment, to pay this BB and T loan off in eight years instead of 10, which is remaining on the debt. So that actually saves the borough on two ends.
Let me ask you this. When we make those payments on this loan, how do we differentiate the money that goes to charge to the parking transit center and the money that goes to a prior project? How do we show that?
The bank is going to give you two schedules. One shows the payoff of the 2008 note, BB and T note.
Oh, wonderful.
The other schedule takes the maximum amount, if you did take 2.5 million.
Okay.
But you're not going strictly anywhere near there.
Okay, so the bank does that work for you and we just post that?
They've also agreed to, if you borrow money and you get the grants in faster than you expected and such, you can repay at any time without any penalty.
Without a penalty. That's fabulous.
Which to me is a good deal.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The bank was to keep you happy. I don't know if, are they your bank anyway?
They're not.
No.
But a lot of RFPs and that was the bank with the best circumstances, especially with no penalty. So what Fulton offered as opposed to the many other banks was the best deal for the borough and for the residents.
Brian, both of the people in the room, and also just because our people here may not come, how much do we currently expect that we still owe on the project, on those garage projects?
We, so far, we've paid 1.77 million. It's a $7 million project.
But what's the difference, and what's the difference between...
So there's three, there's 3.65...
That's not accounted for in terms of what we had.
That's the grant money.
Okay.
3.65 million. We still have grants, applications out there for CRP grant and for the RACP grant totaling 1.8 million.
So assuming we don't get those and we only have money that's already been awarded to us, what are we looking at in terms of money?
As far as financing?
Yeah, to finance.
Approximately 1.8.
1.8 million.
Approximately 1.8.
1.8 million before this loan?
Financing.
Financing, so we only need to finance 1.8 million. And the idea with taking out a loan now is that as we start having to contribute that 1.8 million, we'll be getting garage rental and that's why we...
Well, we would hope to have, we would hope to have the garage open at the end of this year so that it can start to produce its own funds and pay for the, pay for the loan. But the loan, the first payment on the loan is not due until, I think, June of 2020 or...
I believe that's right.
I think it's June of 2020 is when the first principal payment is due.
But isn't the, didn't we change the starting date of the garage until March 1st?
Yes, we did.
One of our change orders and they have one year to complete that.
They have one year for substantial completion.
So perhaps we won't be moving on to it until March 1st.
We won't.
Not meant the cars.
So the, well, we've always, we've always thought that we could open the garage prior to substantial completion of the Borough Hall. Once the garage structure is complete, the transit center structure is complete, we can open that up and complete the interior project of the Borough Hall, which is the way the schedule is made out.
And on that 3.6 that you mentioned grant, does that include the million dollar gift?
No.
No.
That's the soft cost money.
That went to the soft cost.
Design and engineering.
I think that we're confusing, I think probably just that I'm trying to remember, is that I thought that the shortfall that we were talking about kind of up until this point was closer to like $3 million when you subtract the cost of the garage and the grant money.
So we have, we have a million and a half dollars of capital reserve.
Okay, so we added that.
We add that in to the 3.6, gets you $5.1 million of a 7, or $5.1 something million of a $7 million project, which leaves you about 1.8.
Okay, and that's what we're borrowing for?
The difference is what we're borrowing.
Correct.
I know, so I'm gonna, well, can you hold for one second? Mr. O'Neill, are you able to stick around for two more minutes till we get the public comment?
Yeah, he wants to.
Okay, great.
In fact, with the 4th of July holiday coming up, it'd be helpful if I could leave with the documents signed if you enact this to send to DCD, the Public Community Council.
So are you cool hanging out for just a few minutes?
Absolutely.
And we'll do that. So if we can move to the agenda adoption and open it for public comment, and there may be some more questions that come from our public. Is that good?
Sure.
Okay. I'm so sorry, I look like I'm doing something.
I know.
I'm looking up here, but the sun is in my eyes and I'm trying to, that's all right. No, in fact, that one, there is no hope.
It'll go down.
All right, so may we move on to, thank you so much.
Sure.
May we move on to the agenda adoption? Is there any, is there motion?
I would imagine we have the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any additions or deletions to this lovely adoption?
Can I just also make a comment, looking like in the business of the public hearing, so we can hear comments on the findings and that.
Yeah.
What else?
I was just trying to not take that, Mr. O'Neill, time where I want you to.
I have more questions from the audience than I can ask.
Yeah, okay. I mean...
The vote has to be a roll call vote.
Okay, it has to be a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And under discussion items, could we add the scheduling of September's meeting?
We always think ahead, thank you. And... And can you note for us, Lynda, that Amanda joined our adventure about five minutes after seven?
Yes.
Thank you, Lynda, for saying that.
Brian, can we just add like Facebook and website communications to the audience to discuss?
True.
Under discussion items? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Public comment, so I'm going to remind people that it's a four-minute limit, if you can try to keep it to that. I am frequently reminded by my solicitor that this isn't a time that I need to respond back and forth, that we're, this is a time for you to give us your comment. I try very hard to give you answers if I can give you answers because I think that's helpful, but please note that this is your time for us to hear you, so.
Name and address.
Name and address. And I'm going to go right back to him first because he had his hand up as we started our...
It's not really a comment, I just wanted to kind of follow up with...
Name and address.
725 Rising Hurst Lane.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to follow up before Amanda was going, there's this 1.8 million that's kind of wavering out there, but we are actively still working on two grants for that portion of outstanding money.
Yeah.
And that's what Pauline was talking about a couple of weeks ago. Do we know how they're progressing?
I talked to her today, I have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. At this point, nothing is moving because of the...
I thought on her call she said sometime in July was, August was when they moved.
It's August, September, probably.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next to us.
You want my name?
Yes, please, and your address.
Tim R., 225 West Love Street, Oxford, PA.
Thank you.
Tim Hart?
A-R-D.
A-R-D, okay.
Oh, thank you.
Everyone wants to put the T on it, though. The 1.8 that you're refinancing from BB and T, that had 10 years left on the amortization?
The 1.5, yes.
And at 10 more left?
Yes.
Now we're going to make it 20?
No, 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 we're going to make it 10.
Oh, okay, so you're leaving the amortization the same? Because I'm saying you can lower all the interest rates you want, if you extend the amortization, you're not saying this is...
Keep it the same, make it lower.
That's what I said when I said we were making the payment the same.
Okay, so in any residual of the parking complex, it would be 20 years?
Yeah.
Up to 20 years.
Sure. But definitely you're not extending the term on the 1.8 or 1.5.
Okay.
But I want you to save your money if anyone did that.
The dead act, the section we're using, you can't extend it. So we're going to pay it off no later than the date that we would have paid on it.
Right, that's good, that's good. Then you're saving money.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
You can pay it off earlier if you make the same payment.
Right, correct.
We'll be paying it up in eight years.
As long as you do it in a regular amortization period and not extend the amortization period, you're saving money.
Sure.
As soon as you extend it, you're... Yep, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Is there?
Michelle, Michelle Ienery, 766 Market Street. I just have a question for the attorney, if I can.
Can you, you either have to speak up or step up here.
Lizzy can't hear you, from Mr. O'Neill.
From Mr. O'Neill, my question is, is current council has decided that they are opposed to creating a parking fund. The way this loan is structured, if that were to happen in the future, is that okay under the current structure of the loan?
Loan wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Okay, so it wouldn't matter if it's paid?
You have to pay it back, like any bank, you're not, you can't call them up and say, "I'm sorry, I ran out of cash, I'll skedaddle you."
Okay, only because it said it needs to be in the general fund budget.
But if you want to use revenue, you can use revenue from any source.
Okay.
There's no limit on that.
All right.
But it doesn't require you to levy rates and charges of any sort, like you usually do with like a sewer or water trench.
Right.
So it's up, it's strictly up to the council if they want to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment about any agenda items? And then there is a time at the end for non-agenda items. All right, hearing nothing else, we shall move on to nothing for business period forward. Go go to new items of business, which is a formal hearing. No.
No, I know you're in there.
It's just a motion.
It makes you use the word ordinance, but it's not treated like an ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Your normal ordinance.
Thank you.
So here you can just vote.
So someone needs to make a motion?
You already had that, I thought. Or what, that was...
No, it's with the...
Oh, okay.
We don't need the public hearing.
No, we don't need the public hearing, so will they go with make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Right.
So the motion is...
I will really enact the ordinance in the form described that the then in this meeting incur $4 million of non-electoral debt for the purpose of funding the borough share of the new multimodal transportation center and of refinancing the borough's general obligation note, series 2000.
Second.
Is it all good?
No, we already got it.
I understand.
Oh, yeah. I'm fine.
So we've had, we've been educated, we've talked about this for several months now. Is there any more discussion that the council has in regards to this motion?
I know we've discussed this in the past, having what Michelle just referred to as a parking fund, and when we brought that up before...
You just took this motion, because that's something different.
Well...
I love you.
Yeah, but I think that, that knowing that that parking fund is set, is established and that we have some way to monitor that and separate that is part of the basis of my guess for this motion.
Okay.
We've also already done that.
Yeah, we've already split it out.
Yeah. We just have, we just don't have an authority, we didn't want a parking authority.
We don't have a parking authority, we don't have a tax, we're not taxing for that.
Rest. I don't agree with that.
You don't think we have high revenue coming in that's separated for parking?
I don't see how we have that separated with our expenses and I know we talked about having that separate fund and we were told by Brian and the solicitor that if we had that separate fund, we could never take any excess money from that parking fund and put it in the general fund.
And that's accurate, that's accurate. So if we, if we specify that this money is only for parking, then this money is only for parking.
But we have the water fund and the other...
But we don't move the excess into general.
I think that what we have done, although I agree that I think that it could be a little bit more clearly fleshed out, I don't think that it's, I think that that is kind of a process that we can see to work on, is that we have kind of this cost allocation and stress supports now, but we're able to...
And we have that now.
And that is something that you advocated for, that we don't, I agree that maybe we can keep working with it.
Because on the positive side, if the parking fund were to generate as much money as it potentially could and we couldn't move it over to general fund, that would be helpful. And we couldn't reduce taxes, which is our ultimate goal.
We would also like to remind everyone that in this transit center sits the Borough Hall. There's a cost factor that's being borne by the parking to pay for the Borough Hall.
Correct.
A point that I'd like to make because I know from what I've seen while I was trying to do my job and stuff, is that people are concerned about this, and I think the concern is valid, and that's why I want to talk about how we communicate later in the meeting. But I think that it is helpful, somebody who has reservations about the garage, to point out that even though this loan gives us tax authority, and that's what we're using as collateral for the loan, negotiating it on more favorable terms because of that authority ultimately is going to lower the likelihood that we will have to raise taxes because we have less money to pay back. The only option that would guarantee that we wouldn't have to raise taxes, there is none, because if we were to say, "Well, we're not going to modify it now," we'd still have this big gap because we've already contracted with people. So the decision about whether or not to move forward with the garage was made months ago and what we're doing here is trying to be as responsible as we can about how we find that fit and that's why we work so hard, Brian's worked so hard to get time that are good, better than I expected, you know, and I think that that's...
And better than what we have listed in the pro forma all the way through, we were counting on about 4% in the interim pro forma, so it lowers our actual monthly cost considerably.
All right, is there any more discussion, are we good to go?
The thing that I said the last time we talked about this issue is that we have more obligations to pay for it now.
Absolutely. They're building it. Right before our...
I know how our advocates don't pay their contractors, so I don't think we want to go down that road.
Right.
Ms. Berman?
Aye.
Ms. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Birdwell?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye.
Mr. Hershey?
Aye.
And of course, Mr. Hurd is absent, so it's six yes.
So it's unanimous vote.
Unanimous vote.
Motion carries. If you want to pass that over for me and I can sign it away and then...
Well, we can, if you want to, you can finish this.
Are you sure?
We'll get it out.
Well, I mean, there's some discussion items, so I would not want them to have to sit around for discussion items. Discussion items, scheduling of September's meeting.
The first Monday of September is the holiday and I didn't know whether we were going to try to squeeze everything into two meetings or if we were going to schedule something on that day or if we were going to schedule something on another day that week.
Well, we sort of set precedent, so it's the first two, January, February, correct? So why not?
Squeeze everything in the two meetings, yes.
We can do it. That's fine, I just think we need to, we need to have one that's scheduled.
So that we will not have a council meeting on Labor Day and we will squeeze our committee meetings until the 9th. And if we have to continue on, we'll start at 6 o'clock on the 16th.
Yeah, we did plan that at 6 o'clock on the first Monday.
While we're talking about calendars, I think we also need to talk about Election Day and parking at Election Day and encourage, I'm not sure who's in charge of where we vote and how much advance we might have to have to change the voting pool, but we may want to take into consideration what parking on Election Day will look like and encourage the people who have the authority to request a change in venue to maybe do that.
I don't think you really need to, I don't know that there was any issues at the...
So maybe what we can do is we can reach out to the people who were in charge of that at the primary and see what their opinion was in regards to moving forward.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that exactly works.
The county has to move it, right?
Right, I guess my point is that we've had people come to us and talk about Election Day. The parking situation is not going to be any different, if not, I don't know what it will look like that week. So I think we need to communicate with and encourage whoever is in charge of the polling place to...
I think that's the judge of elections.
So who would be the judge of elections?
Etha.
So Brian, could you please reach out to Etha and say that it's come to our attention that there are concerns about Election Day?
Yeah.
And parking and that we can't guarantee what that's going to look like in November and whatever support you need from the council to move forward with a different site temporarily for that day or if they felt comfortable after the primary moving forward. I just don't want them to think that we neglect the situation.
I kept an eye on it most of the day.
Yeah, I know, I would really like something in writing, a communication back and forth in writing, because I think that's important.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't think we have any other concepts for the calendar, is that accurate?
I think that's it.
All right, thanks. Facebook and website, Amy and Doug.
I just want to add, is it okay for, I just want to add, I just...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes.
Regarding that issue with the polling place. Yeah, comment.
Yes.
Catherine Floyd, 241 Penn Avenue. The parking lot was almost at capacity for most of the day. There may have been one parking space sometimes. We had a number of people who said they had to go around the building a number of times before they could find a place to park down along 472. That was for somebody that we, you know, run over several times and those people were coming in the other side of the church and they would tell us to inside. And they did tell us that they had trouble finding a place to park. My understanding is that the committee people, the Republican and Democratic people have to agree that they want to move the polling place. And I know that the Democratic person intended to be the Republican person about having it moved.
Awesome.
But I don't know if you want...
I voted at 5:30 and I parked right in front of a park and didn't have any discomfort, so I wasn't sure what the rest of the day had looked like, but I don't want to lose sight that it's already July and things may need to happen in a timely manner. I just want us to not know about that. Thank you. Thank you, Lynda. And then, I can't do two things at one time, so.
I think you need to manage, if I'm 12, I'd be comfortable.
Not yet, because I said this earlier.
All right, okay, so go ahead. Facebook and website is what you...
I think that it would be a good idea if, when we are putting something out on advertising, to just automatically put the same thing on the Borough Facebook page and on the Borough website. I think if we leave information that is clear, we can control everything that people say, but at least then we are driving competition.
Sure.
So maybe when you mail it in to say we local, it could be posted on the Facebook page rather than...
And on the website.
And on the website. So you probably need to get somebody else trained to post on the website.
Well, we're working on that, we're working on that now, Amy was on vacation, so I could first that little group of today, because I don't have that, but it's not a problem.
All right, any more discussion about Facebook or website? Any additional public comments at this time? It doesn't have to be an agenda item, it's just...
Well, I do have something on the Upper Street during a duty time. Just as a suggestion, if you go back to the old one-way like was, you'd have parking on the one side, that you could block it off or prevent people coming in, which was actually a...
Thanks, Brian. Thank you.
But if we give, if we give people, it doesn't take long to vote.
It really does not.
And if you've got nine parking spaces there, you can get them to have.
Thank you, Ms. McTeal, Ms. Ienery. Just to... Name again.
Michelle Ienery, 766 Market Street. Just to add to what they're all saying, if maybe somebody could talk to the Octo Rare to see if they could hold off deliveries for that day, because that seems their takeout business and the beer trucks were coming down and that was kind of just causing a little congestion, so that might help if possible, too.
Thank you.
Catherine Floyd, again. I have a question, I love asking that.